Good evening and welcome to this public forum with the candidates for the Mandan School Board. I am Shar McLaughlin with the Bismarck League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator tonight. This forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are three seats open in this election for the Mandan School Board and we have five candidates running for election. I would like to thank the candidates who have joined us tonight, Carmen Surtola and Tim Towson. That is who is here with us tonight. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards that can be provided to you. And the viewers at home can call in your questions by calling (667) 3237 between 7:00 and 7:45 tonight only, and tonight is May 10th. That number again is (667) 3237. We will repeat that number periodically. No questions will be asked that attack the candidates personally. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas, so personal attacks should be avoided. Our purpose this evening is to provide the voters with information about the candidates and their positions on the issues that affect the Mandan Public Schools. Now let's meet our candidates. I will read a short bio of each candidate and after your bio is read, you will have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck School Board. Bismarck, Mandan, Mandan, Mandan School Board, you're right. I was going to read this, I made a mistake? Please comply with our time restrictions and since there's only two of you, we can be pretty general on this. We would like to get as many of these questions answered tonight and asked. Our timer over there will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds and 10 seconds and then hopefully you can finish your sentences or your thought. I'm going to start with you Carmen, since you're first on my page here. Carmen Surtola has lived in Mandan for six years and currently owns her own business doing transcription services. She has past work experience for cooperatives, private businesses, and as a purchase agent and marketer. Carmen is a graduate of the University of Mary with a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management. Carmen presently serves on the curriculum and finance committees of the Mandan Public Schools and previously served on the advisory committee for increased enrollment. In addition, she is a member of Spirit of Life Parish and serves on the marketing committee for Ishtan Ministries and has been, had past involvement with Camp Grasik, Buckstop Junction, and Rotary. Carmen, I think you have one minute to here answer our first question. And that was, did I give you that? I think it was asked of you earlier.
Yes.
Yes, would you like to introduce yourself? I gave a bio and you can introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for the Mandan School Board.
Well, thank you Shar. Again, my name is Carmen Surtola and we moved here about six years ago and I just love this place. I love what Mandan has. It has so many positives and so many good things that I don't think we tout our horn enough. But I also know that there's a lot of changes going on in our state and those changes are moving this way. And we're seeing a lot of change already in our community with our, you know, with the growth on Main Street, the strip, you know, now with new stores coming into the north side of town. We're seeing all that. We're seeing enrollments go up in our schools and what are we going to do with that? You know, there's a lot of things that are going to change over the next few years and what do we want that to look like? And I think our schools are such an integral part of that. I want to bring my voice as a parent and a taxpayer to the table to concentrate on keeping it local, taking local control back for our schools so that our kids can have the best success, so that their futures are bright and they understand the beauty of where they come from. And may they always want to either stay or come back. Thanks.
Thank you Carmen. Our other candidate that's with us tonight is Tim Towson. And Tim is a lifelong Mandan resident. He has worked for the North Dakota Department of Corrections for 26 years, the last 14 of which he has been at the capacity of Human Resource Officer out at the Youth Correctional Center here in Mandan. He is a graduate of the University of North Dakota with a Bachelor of Science degree in Psychology. Tim is completing his sixth year of service on the Mandan School Board where he has worked on several subcommittees. Tim has been involved in contract negotiations with the administrators and the Mandan Education Association for the last three rounds of negotiations. Tim, would you like to take a minute to introduce yourself a bit and tell us why you are seeking reelection to the Mandan School Board?
The last six years have really been very enjoyable for me on the school board. I'm very proud of the accomplishments while I'm in my tenure on the district, but there are many things on the horizon that we still need to complete. We can't complete these things however, just as a board. The board itself is a governing body, but we have to work with the administration and the staff of the, of the school district. As you may know, there's going to be a great turnover in our administration this year. Wilfred Valeski, our current superintendent, is retiring July 1st of this year. Mike Bits, who is our current Assistant Superintendent, will be taking Wilfred's place effective that date of July 1st. In addition, Mike's replacement, we've also, the board has also approved Mike Bits' replacement as Assistant Superintendent. He will take, take that position effective July 1st. Another administrative change, this is huge to the district, is Joe Lukash. Our business manager's also submitted his resignation, his retirement, I'm sorry, and he will be leaving the district effective July 1st. The board again has approved a replacement for Joe to, she will be coming on board effective July 1st. Two additional positions that are critical to the district. Gordon Bergy, who is responsible for Department of Transportation for the district, has also, will be retiring effective the fall of this year. That position has not been filled at this time, however, we are looking at filling that position not only as a transportation administrator, but as well working with grounds and facilities. And last but not least, Lori Lengang, who is our Human Resource Coordinator, will also be retiring by the end of this year. That again is another position that's critical to the district that needs to be filled before Lori leaves tenure with, with the district. I think it's critical that there's a smooth transition of these positions coming into place as well because the district has to work hand in hand with those administrators to achieve the goals of the district.
Thank you Tim. And thank you, audience, for being with us here tonight. We're going to now move on to questions that have been submitted by members of the League of Women Voters and our audience here tonight. Our viewers also at home can submit questions. Each candidate is now going to have one minute and I'm going to kind of alternate back and forth between you. I'll probably start with you Carmen and the next time start with, go with Tim, since there's only two of you. We had originally allocated enough time for all five candidates, but unfortunately for them, you are the only two that we have with us tonight. Again, I would like to invite our in-house audience to submit questions using the index cards that are provided by our volunteers. And television viewers, tonight only until next 45 minutes, you can call (667) 3237 during our forum to ask your own questions. Our volunteers will take the answers down and if we get time and come through them, we will ask them. And now Carmen, I do have a question. I'm going to start here with one that had been prepared and this is our first one here. If you are elected, what would be your priorities or challenge for this next year and the next three years?
You know, I think the, one of the big reasons I'm running is that I see a lack of communication between our parents and our schools and I think that is critical. If we want to hold on to what we have and build on the positives, I think we need to get more parental involvement. I think there's a lot of parents out there that feel disconnected from our schools and I really believe that's a key element to this first year that I'm on the board, to really bring that, those parents' voice to the table. That would be one of my big priorities. Because I think with that, then we can build on all the other areas that need attention and that being, one of the big ones for our school system, as Tim was saying, all that turnover with top administrative positions, that's going to mean a lot of change. The other big change that's coming is a new director of the Department of Public Instruction or a new superintendent. And that to me is huge because we can see a lot of changes come from the state and so over the next three years, not only will we see, you know, Mandan change as a, as a town, but also our, you know, just everything that's coming down from the federal level to the state level, to our schools. And, you know, we need to get a handle on, you know, what, what's good for our kids and what isn't. And that's a priority for me over my whole tenure on the board.
Thank you Carmen. Now Tim, I'm going to ask you the same question even though you've somewhat addressed it in your opening remarks. What would be your priorities for the first year and then for the next three years if you are elected?
In addition to the, the need for a smooth transition with administration, I think a critical piece is our ever-increasing enrollment. The West, Williston Dickinson have really seen that and the number of numbers increased dramatically. Our school system as well is seeing it. And I think it's imperative upon the board and the citizens of Mandan to address that matter as soon as possible. Right now, what we're really looking at as a board is, is looking at having a bond issue this fall to make a decision as to what direction the district needs to go. Whether that be a new school or not a new school, I want to be part of that process. But enrollment is, is definitely right on the verge right now. We're right on the edge of not being able to have the physical capacity to educate kids the way they need to. So that would be, the primary piece that I would look for is looking at how we're going to address those needs.
Thank you. And I have some more questions here, so I think, Tim, I'm just going to alternate and you get to answer the first, be the first one to respond to this next one. And it is similar that the school district has indicated their plan for a bond election this fall to, for the purpose of proposing to building of a new elementary school. Are you supporting the building of a new school and if so, why or why not?
I do support a new school. I feel that the numbers that we have right now support it. I know that there's some controversy right now as to if we build a school, where do we build a school? Is it on the north side? Is it on the south side? I personally believe that there's a need for both a school in the north and in the south. However, the citizens would have to make a decisions whether that is something that's even viable. Right now, the current numbers that the district has would support filling two sections of school, a two-section school on the north side. Right now, I know the south side is a developing area. Right now, the numbers really don't support a school to be down in that area, but I can see that there is going to be definitely a need for a school on the south side as well. But yes, indeed, I do support a new school.
And Carmen, your response to the district's plan for a bond election this fall for the purpose of building a new elementary school, are you in support of this new elementary and why or why not?
I am in support of the new school. I, I think it's inevitable. It's coming, we're not going to be able to stop it even if we wanted to and I don't think we do want to. I know that there have been, you know, many discussions as far as where we're at as a school system, as a, you know, as a city, as far as financially and, you know, how do we want that picture to, to look? And I, I think, you know, there's a lot we can do in planning for a new school that would allow us to be very fiscally responsible in building that school, but yet making sure that we're taking care of our kids and giving them the best opportunity to learn. And for me, that means, you know, when you've got 25 kindergarteners in a room, I don't know how the teacher maintains sanity, much less learning. And, you know, those types of things, we owe it to our teachers and we owe it to our kids. And so I really think it's important that we do look at the school and do it as fiscally responsible as possible.
Thank you. And I'm going to let you continue on this same vein with the new schools. We had some questions here that were sort of, that the district has actually purchased land in the northwest several years ago and now in the southeast for these two elementary schools. And the question was, do you agree or disagree with the aspect of land acquisition for the future and why or why not? And then we'll let Tim address it after you.
You know, I look at Dickinson, who is breaking ground on a new school on the north side of the interstate and they bought the land many years ago and they're real happy about it today because it's paid for. So they don't, they don't need to include the cost of that land in their, you know, in that bond issue. And in that regard, you know, it's a good thing. Was it a good buy for our school to, to buy it now? I think in the long run, yes, it will be. Simply because we see land values continuing to increase had they waited, you know, maybe we don't need another school in the south for, maybe we can't afford it for even five to seven years, 10 years down the road. It's still, is probably a good buy by getting land today because I think down the road, we're going to probably pay a lot more for it. So I think it was a good decision.
And Tim, your take on this?
Yes, I, I supported the purchase of the land, of the Lakewood land. Many years ago, I can't even tell you how many years ago, but at least 20 years ago, our board at that time made a decision to purchase land up northwest Mandan and that sat vacant for a long time. Now we have an opportunity to use it. I don't think the purchase of the land down in Lakewood is going to sit as long as the land up in, on the northwest part of town, simply because I see the growth down in Lakewood happening a lot quicker than it did up in the northwest. So I think, the, the other, the other piece to think about in reference to this is, they don't make land anymore. And as, as the southwest part, or south, I'm sorry, southeast part of town continues to fill in, if we would not have purchased that land, we'd have lost the sight of possibly having a local kindergarten in that area. So I think it's, it was vitally important for us to make the purchase while the land was available.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to let you address the next question first and this is one we kind of touched on a bit before we started the program tonight. But what is your stance on the June 12th primary election property tax measure, which is number two? Are you in support or opposed to eliminating all the property taxes, which, and then substituting finances from the state for the schools as well as everything else? Tim, why or why not?
I am not in, in support of measure two. I believe it's critical that we maintain local control. Our state legislators, I think, have enough on their plate already, much more or less to delve into the, the inner workings of what municipalities and what school districts need. I would much rather our citizens make a decision as to what's in the best interest of our citizens as opposed to having legislators from across the state making that decision. So I am absolutely opposed to measure two.
Carmen, your position on measure two?
My position is, I'm probably going to make friends and enemies on both sides of the aisle by what I have to say, but I believe in my heart that property tax is probably one of the most unfair taxes that has ever come down the pike and I know every state has them as far as I understand. And I get that part. But I do not believe measure two is the answer to fixing what's wrong with property tax. I, I think there hasn't been enough buy-in by any of the entities that I believe need to want property tax to go away. There's a lot of ways that can, it can be looked at. I am very happy that measure two is on the ballot in the fact that I really believe this conversation needs to happen. I really believe our state needs to get a handle at this point in time on what, what are our property taxes? How do they work? What is more fair to our taxpayers? You know, I see good arguments on both sides of this issue. I just don't believe that measure two is the answer at this point.
Thank you. And just for the audience and everybody listening tonight, the League of Women Voters did have a forum right here several months ago with proponents and opponents to measure two. And it is still being rebroadcast and is available on the Community Government Access Channel too. Carmen, earlier, I'm going to let you go to this one, but you mentioned something about the parent community involvement in the Mandan School District. How would you increase the parent involvement? And we'll let Tim answer this after you do.
Okay. One of the ways I would increase the parent involvement is, I think we have a wonderful tool in our website for our schools. I don't know if parents even know it's out there. You know, I believe that parents are responsible to ask questions. I also have talked to a lot of parents that they don't know who to ask the question to. I, I just see a real breakdown in communication and then when you do come in and want to find out things, you hear things like, you know, NCLB and MREC and DPI and, you know, all these acronyms and as a parent, you can just see the shield go over the eyes because it's like, I'm lost, I have no idea what you're talking about, where do I go from here? Many parents will just give up because the parents that I have talked to, some of them, it's almost like education has become big business and you've got all this terminology that has nothing to do with me and my child. It has everything to do with programs and policies. And so for that parent to feel like they're a part of that process, I think we have to have better communication. We can start with the website. We can have areas on there, a parent tab that says, you know, frequently asked questions. We can, we've got a lot of new people that are going to move in. Mandan's a very welcoming place. How are we going to welcome these people? How are we going to bring them in and say, we want you here, we want your input, we want your kids to feel like they're a part of our community? How do we do that? I think the website's a good place to start. I think we need to see the community really get involved with the school in that welcoming process, in that communication process. And I'll stop there for now.
Okay, Tim, your turn on this one. How would you increase parent and community involvement in the school, Mandan School Districts?
I think Carmen's thought in reference to the, any access of media, whether it be the, through the website, the school website, or any other means is vitally important. One of the things that it also allows on, on the negative side is it allows parents to have information in a way without having contact with people from the school district. I would look at touching base with those people that have already demonstrated an interest in the district. Those people that are part of PTOs and looking at those members that have already expressed some interest in, in the schools that they're involved in and asking them to participate. We have a number of different committees that we are always asking for volunteers to participate in and it seems that traditionally, there's very few people that really attend those or volunteer to be part of those. And I would just encourage anybody that has any interest to participate in those things. There's a five core committees that anybody that has any level of interest can, can participate in. So I, I just encourage people to participate as much as they can.
Thank you. I have some questions here, one that's come in from the audience and, but before I get into that, I would again like to invite everyone who is here and listening at home, that you can ask your questions by calling into (667) 3237 during our forum tonight, which is May 10th, about, for about the next 20 minutes or so. And I have a question that came in from the audience and it kind of dovetails with one that was already at, here before, so I'm going to kind of blend them together and let Tim, you go first.
Okay.
What do you believe the school district should do with the former junior high school building and the former central administration building, which according to this question, still has not been sold? Do you consider it to be used as a possible use as an alternate, alternative high school?
As far as the cab building, we're currently in the process of trying to sell that. That's been on the market for a number of months now and we're, we're still looking at trying to sell that. As far as the GPA in itself, a number of years ago, the board made a decision that that was not a place for kids to be educated. And I maintain that same stance. I do not believe that that is the place where we want to have our kids educated. The cost to renovate the building is exorbitant. That money can be put into a better use with a new school. As part of that entire project, when the middle school, when the middle school project was developed and, and part of the, the whole project as far as moving out of the GPA, there was also a, a number of dollars that were allocated specifically for demolition purposes of that building. When the thought that that building could possibly be revitalized by some other means, some other entity coming in to possibly take it over and renovate it, the, the board made a decision to take those dollars and actually turn them back. Thereby, I think it was approximately $600,000 to $700,000 that was sent back that was not used. Now if, if we, if we needed to tear it down, we would not have that money to do that. I think it's in the, in the best interests of this district to continue to pursue having somebody else come in, into that building and revitalize it. I went to school in that building, so I know those halls pretty good. And I'd like to see it revitalized rather than tore down, but it really doesn't have the value for educating students anymore.
Carmen, I'm going to let you answer that double question too. What do you think that the school district should continue to do in the future with that former junior high school and former central administration building, which still has not been sold? And do you think it should be considered as an alternative high school location?
First of all, I, it's interesting because I ran for this board in 2009 and I actually went back and reviewed the video from the League of Women Voters for that particular run. And the same issue was on the table in 2009. And I look at where we are today and how much money has the district spent and we still have the buildings and they're empty. Something needs to be done. That's just so obvious. And, you know, I keep hearing, we can't sell them because of the asbestos. Okay, well, what's Plan B then? We have to go there. We just have to. We cannot continue to maintain these buildings and the upkeep and the, you know, the electricity and the heat and the, you know, we have to do something. I do not believe that the junior high is a place where the children should be either. But I do believe in the bid process. And I believe that with the bid process, in keeping with free enterprise and capitalism, someone can come in and bid on the building or both of the buildings if they can't get the cab sold. And if the bid is accepted, I don't believe that that bidder should have to jump through hoops to say, this is what I'm going to do with the building, will you please give me your blessing? That's not up to the board. That's up to that individual. You know, if they purchase the building, it's their building. They are free then to do with it as they choose. That's the way I look at it. And I just think a bid process is the best way to go.
Thank you very much Carmen. I have another question on the previously submitted ones, which is might be interesting for both of you. If you could, if you could encourage one change in the school district, what would it be?
I think just for us to do a better job of tooting our horn for the positives that we have that are Mandan. You know, you see it on the marquee outside the high school, we have the best music teacher in the state, we have the best coach in the state, we have the best art teacher in the state. You maybe see it hit the newspaper one day, but what do we do to really promote that? What do we do? How are we integrating that into the homes of our community and across the river too and saying, we're not, you know, we are, we have so many positives here and we just need, we can build on those. We could, you know, when you go to a sporting event, we have one middle school, we have one high school, that ties us together. It's like when your kids are little, they have a little circle of friends and that's our elementary. When they get a little older, they get a few more friends, that's our middle school. When they hit high school, they see more and more, but we only have one of each of those middle school and high schools. You go to the basketball game, you know, we've got one high school and it ties us. And it's so important that we just build on that strength and just that community spirit. That's what I would, more so than anything, just like to see more and more of that between our schools, our businesses, and our civic organizations, just tying that together and shouting it from the rooftops because we have it and, and we should brag it up.
Tim, I'm going to get a chance you to answer that, if you could encourage one change in the school district, what would the change be?
I'd, I'd agree as well. I think really marketing Mandan as a place to live is important. One of the things most people look at when they look at a place to live is what's the education? The state assessments for Mandan this past year- The state assessments for Mandan this past year, first place in science and reading, second place in math and language arts. Nobody has a match to our school. We have, I believe, the best school in the state. That's something people need to hear. That's, that's a drawing card to the city. That's going to bring people in. That's going to bring citizens to us. That's going to bring taxpayers to us. That's going to bring homes. That's going to help the businesses. That's what we need to get out there, is that this is the best school system in the, in the state. You know, I think people within education see and hear that information, but I think the general public doesn't recognize that. One of the things in reference to encouraging the district as well is, we didn't get there just by luck. It's because we have good staff that get our kids to that point. And this is a place where our kids can really be safe and it can learn. And I think it's just vitally important that people realize the value that education has. Studies have really shown, you know, with the, I want to just step one piece a little bit different here. The other piece to, I want to encourage people to think about is in reference to the importance of the number of kids that we have in our elementary schools. I think it's vitally important that people realize that by the third grade, by the third grade, the, basically, the standards kind of been set with kids in reference to how successful they are going to be in school. With our ever-increasing numbers, we need to address that issue. And that's coming up in the next two years. Our numbers are going to be beyond what they should be. And that's going to impact those numbers I talked about, us taking first and second throughout the state. It might be a delayed effect, but we don't want to take a delay to this. We want to stay number one in the state.
Okay. That sounds very good for both of you. But I want to have, ask this question that was submitted from the audience tonight, which kind of goes on to the go-to district that Mandan is. Mandan Public School has about a four to five teacher turnover every year as they apply to and get hired over in Bismarck. The teachers there do not move this way. What can we do as a board to stop the drain of our teachers and make us in Mandan the go-to district? Your first.
I'm first, okay.
Yeah, you're first.
Certainly, we have teachers that move over to the Bismarck district, and our school district cannot compete with, with the salaries that are offered in Bismarck. That's just fiscally not possible for Mandan to do that. Studies have shown globally that money is not the driving force for people to leave employment. It's the work environment. And we need to work on that aspect and make this a place where people want to stay and not look at money as the reason to make that change. So I'd encourage us to really look at that work environment and make it a place where people want to stay because it's a place they like, and not a place because they're making more money.
Thank you. Carmen, your chance to address this. What would you do as, what do you think the board can do to stop the drain and make Mandan the go-to district?
Again, I'll go right back to number one. Just do the compare and contrast with what positives Mandan has compared to the Bismarck system. Those, those figures, I just wonder if part of that isn't, you know, whether we like it or not, Bismarck has more goods and services available than Mandan does. If I'm a teacher, and it's easier for me, if I have kids, to have them in a Bismarck school, just because they're involved in all these after-school things in Bismarck, is it easier for me to just move over there and be a teacher there? That may be part of that number. I'm not saying it totally is, but it could be. The other piece is, I agree with Tim, you know, the work environment in Mandan, you know, there are teachers who are frustrated. And I understand that. You know, I think as a board, we need to be more cognizant of those frustrations, whether it's, you know, now with the new management coming in and everything, what are we going to do to take a look at that piece? You know, what can we do for better retention? Do we need to look at a different way of evaluating our teachers so that we do keep the best and the brightest? You know, I think that's a whole piece that really needs exploration, because I think there's a lot of frustration on both sides.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to give you a chance to ask this, answer this one first. Do, it says, what is your, do you believe that the Mandan Public School District has an appropriate variety of extracurricular opportunities for the students? And please explain your answer and your opinion.
You know, I believe that they're doing a very good job in many areas of extracurricular, something that I would like to see more of, and I'm not sure that most people would consider it extracurricular, but I do. More with our, more publicity, more community awareness, our art department, our speech, our debate, our band, you know, we have, we have such talented kids in these areas, and, and I don't think they get the recognition that they need to. I, I think, you know, what kind of recognition are we giving students? You know, I'll take my own case. I have a son who's very artistic. In the middle school, you better get your name in the year before if you want them in the art class, because it's full. And so he can't get into art in eighth grade, and I think, okay, I'll get him in art in ninth grade. No, there is no ninth grade art in Mandan. That's a problem to me. I think we need to have some cohesiveness in those subjects that say, if you're part of the arts community of our kids, we want to give you every opportunity, just as much as we do on the sports side of things. I think that's very important, and I think that's an area we can improve.
Thank you, Carmen. And Tim, your chance to answer this. Do you believe that the Mandan Public School District has an appropriate variety of extracurricular opportunities for students? And explain your opinion.
I think diversity is good as far as opportunities. Just recently, yesterday, I went to the awards banquet over the noon hour at Mandan High School, and it was amazing how many different awards there are, and how many skilled students that we have, some talented students. And they don't come from just one area. They come from many, many areas, extracurricular, clubs, all. I, I think we're well-represented in that area. Are there areas that we could probably improve on? I'm sure there are. I, I think Mandan does very well for the size of district that we are. I think we're very competitive for the size of our district. As I mentioned earlier, you know, in reference to academically how we perform, we're, we're a smaller school than Bismarck system, but we beat Bismarck academically. The only thing that we have a trouble with is, in some of the sports, we can't compete, but they have three to four times the number of kids in their school system. So I think we're doing pretty good. We're kind of like an underdog. But I think we do a pretty darn good job as far as providing opportunities for kids.
I have a question that's going to segue right after that, right after that one on the academic, you know, abilities and spectrum here. But I just wanted to remind our audience, we have about five more minutes that you can call in your questions if you have any of our two candidates here tonight. Our phone number is 667-3237. This is tonight only, May 10th, and about five more minutes to call those questions. Well, Tim, I'm going to ask this one here of you, which kind of segued in from what you had just answered the other one. It says, do you believe the Mandan School District's curricula provide adequate service for all spectrums of the student academic abilities? And explain your opinion.
You know, I think there's probably some room for improvement there. A lot of times, I think we look at both ends of the spectrum. We look at those kids in the middle, and it's kind of maybe a little bit of the 80/20, 20 principle, where 20% of the population gets 80% of the attention. But I think on the high end, the gifted kids, we could probably improve in that area of making more opportunities for kids. And I think we're doing a pretty good job with that, with the ability of kids now to actually receive college credits in the high school system that's ever-expanding. My daughter, who's a senior this year, will have 13 college credit, I'll take that back, 16 college credits going in as a freshman. So I think Mandan has really been successful in reference to that. I think there's always room for improvement in all areas. So I'll leave it at that.
Carmen, your chance to share with us. Do you believe that the school district's curricula provides adequate services for all spectrums of student academic abilities? And explain your opinion.
You know, sitting on the curriculum committee, I see some really good things. I also see some things that are concerning to me. You know, I think, I see a lot, in sitting in the meetings that I've sat in, I see a lot of, again, programs and implementation and, you know, hopefully outcomes. Not all of them even have outcome studies, which bothers me, because I don't know why we spend the money if we don't know if it's a successful program. But the other piece of that is, and parents are wondering, you know, I just want to know why my son can't remember four times four. I just want to know why, you know, Johnny reads a story to me, and he has no clue what he just read. I don't know what to do as a parent. What's the school doing? And, you know, it's those kinds of things that I think we can address, you know, and I think we need to be real, real, real careful, excuse me, when we take those federal dollars and implement federal programs in our schools. As far as I can tell from the research I've done, 99% of the time, there are strings attached. And sometimes the strings involve what is going to be in our textbooks. And I don't know that parents are aware of that, and I think parents need to be aware of that. Because some of the things that are in a textbook where one size fits all doesn't necessarily apply to our kids, you know, and I think that's part of that local control of our schools that I really want to see us get a handle on and pull, pull it back in. You know, the other thing I hear about, you know, well, now let's bring this new program in, and we can improve this area and that area, and we, you know, it's been studied by all these academics all over the country, and it's wonderful. Is it really? Is it really wonderful for Mandan kids? What if we bring a common sense approach and say, you know what, 40% of our kids are under, under in their math scores. What are we going to do about that? What if we spent that money instead of this new program? What if we, what if we hired tutors? What if we let parents know that there's tutors available for their kids that they can afford? You know, there's tutors out there, but a lot of families can't afford to pay what those tutors charge. And so it's some of that kind of stuff, some of that common sense approach that I would really like to see further explored.
Thank you, Carmen. Well, I'm going to let you go first, and here's one that really is right following up on it. So what role should the school board take regarding improving those student achievement? The board itself?
The board itself, I think we look at how we spend our dollars. That's number one. What are the, what is the effectiveness of the programs? Are we, are we teaching subjects that are going to help our kids be successful? Are we, are we doing a good enough job on the basics from kindergarten through, you know, through fifth grade? Are they getting those basic building blocks in such a strong format that they've got that solid base to build on when they enter that middle school? Are we doing enough to integrate, you know, to, to be able to have a more seamless transition for our kids when they go from the elementary to the middle school level? How seamless is that for them? You know, from the middle school to the high school? How can we do that better so that those kids have every opportunity to succeed in that mission?
Tim, your answer to what do you think the role of the school board should be regarding improving student achievement?
I certainly think that accountability is certain, certainly part of that whole need for the, for the board to ensure that the dollars that are spent in programs are done effectively. One of the things the board has done, I believe about three years ago, we purchased Viewpoint, which is a database which will allow us to do longitudinal studies as to improvement with kids. To do an assessment of a group of kids has less benefit than looking at individual growth. And that is really the critical piece, is how are individual kids growing? And then looking for those patterns is really the key piece. Right now, because we don't have enough data in that base, we can't really make any empirical decisions in reference to what's necessarily effective or not effective. But through time, I believe that we will have that information. So I think it's critical that we continue to pursue working on cutting-edge items with our, with our students. One example is, as an example, I don't think any other school district has introduced iPads into their school system. Mandan has done that. So we're kind of leading the, leading the way for new technology that's introduced into the school systems. I think those types of ideas and concepts, given trial runs to see how effective they are, and, and making decisions whether we continue to support those types of programs are important. I think we have to look at every program and evaluate every program on an, at, not only as a needed basis, but how effective they are. And asking those people that are running programs to, to give us the information as a board on an annual basis, how effective that program is.
Thank you. Well, I have a slightly different question. We're going to go into a different tact, but in some ways, it does apply to what you both have just been talking about. What is your opinion of the school district's participation in the efforts of the Mandan Tomorrow Committee? In particular, the goals undertaken by the Education and Workforce Committee. And you get to start, Tim.
Well, I think it's imperative that we work collaboratively with all entities within the Mandan community. One hand basically feeds the other. Just as I mentioned, it's important that we market the fact that we have the best school system in the state. That will help all the other entities within, within the community of Mandan. One will feed the other. As, as, as more citizens move into Mandan, they feel that this is the home community that is best suited for them. The tax dollars will be spent, businesses will prosper. We already are starting to see the, the start of that already. And I think those things will have kind of a snowballing effect. And I think it's critical that we are part of that whole mission as far as a player at the table, making those decisions for the community of Mandan.
Thank you. Carmen, what is your opinion of the district's participation with the Mandan Tomorrow Committee? And in particular, the, the goals that are undertaken by the Education and Workforce Subcommittee of them?
I think it's critical that, that piece stays in place and hopefully expands and builds upon itself. You know, I have talked to some of the members, and it seems like maybe there's a little bit of stagnation going on in that committee. Some people are tired. They've been, they've been hard at it for a while, you know? So then the question becomes, how do you bring more people in? What do you do? You know, I think the dual-credit program that's, you know, being promoted through that committee is, is really, really excellent. The internship program, boy, I'd like to see that get developed more, you know, and, and get more buy-in from our businesses to be able to, you know, have our students, you know, similar to Bismarck, where, you know, they, they go out into the community and have a job. And some of them, when they graduate high school, they stay in that job, and they love it. And, you know, if we can do some of that matching up and some of that hands-on learning for our kids, you know, and develop that with the business community, I think that's just a huge deal. I'd also like to see more emphasis brought to the civic organizations that are in Mandan to be able to pair up with our classrooms and give the kids more of a feel for, you know, what do we do in Mandan to make it a great place? Here's some of the things that we do in our group. Here's some of the things you can do, you know? Just really give them more of a sense of where they come from, and what Mandan is, and who we are. And I just think that's a huge piece for our kids to know their town. You know, when I started my campaign for this, I was envisioning a stool, and it had three legs, and it was the schools, the civic organizations, and the businesses. And on that stool sits our families and our community members. And if those legs are in balance, boy, our families and our community can't help but just be sitting pretty and happy. So that would be the goal for me, to keep that going with the Tomorrow Committee.
Well, thank you both, and I would like to thank you both for being here tonight. We have allocated a lot of time for all of the candidates who didn't show, including you. So I'm going to say right now, why don't I give you one minute to sum up, provide a closing comment on running for the school board here in Mandan? Carmen, why don't you start? I'll let you.
In 2009, when I ran, I had no idea, I had a little bit of an idea, what the school board does or doesn't do. But there is something out there that's, you know, and it's on the website, and it tells you, what's, what's the job of the school board? It approves the budget. It's the policymaking body for the school district. They set the policies for the management and the superintendent and the staff to carry on, you know, and to, to implement. They establish the goals and priorities. They acquire and dispose of property. They serve as a link between the school system and the public. They interpret the educational needs and concerns of the community. And they serve as liaisons to various district and non-district committees. I didn't know the school board was supposed to do all those things, but I think it's really... really neat that they do. And, you know, to be elected to that board and to be able to participate in that, to make this one of the, you know, just toot our horn and, and build on our strengths, and, and I just would be honored to do that for this community because I love this place. Thank you.
Tim, I'm gonna let you have another minute to provide a closing comment on your reelection to the Mandan School Board.
Well, it, I've been on the school board for six years, and I think, um, when I came on, um, the relationship, I think, with the school board and the, the staff members in the district wasn't in the best of shape. Um, over time, I think those relationships and bonds have gotten better, and I think it's not, it's very critical, um, for the board and the staff members to be working cohesively for the benefit of the kids in the district. Um, I just, I'm just, I just feel blessed that I've had all the opportunities, um, and exposure to all the different information. As Carmen mentioned, um, there's a lot to being on the board, um, and there's, there's a lot more to learn. Um, it's just been a pleasure, um, working with the staff. I know some people sometimes think, as an example, negotiating with, uh, for contracts for teachers is an unpleasant task that you don't want, but I think it's, it's vitally important. I think establishing, uh, upfront and being honest, um, with those people that you're negotiating is critical to making those relationships work. Um, and I, and I, and I hope those people that I've had to negotiate with feel, feel the same way. Um, I have never entered into any type of negotiation with any false sense that I'm going to try to, um, uh, do somebody wrong. Um, I truly believe that we need to pay people a fair, fair market salary, um, but I also believe that we need to be fiscally responsible when we make those decisions. So I'd just be honored if, uh, everybody came out and voted and put a checkmark by my name. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here tonight, and I also wanna thank Dakota Media Access and all the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing our forum tonight. We also wanna thank the viewers at home and our audience members here tonight for taking your time to learn more about the candidates and the issues. While this is a primary election, I want to remind people, this will be final for the Mandan School Board. So all of the three positions will be filled by this election on June 12th. This program is going to replace several times on Community Government Access, which is cable channel two. It's also going to be available for online viewing at www dot free TV dot O R G in the next days coming up to the June 12th election. And since I have a minute here, I'm gonna do a little promotional stuff for the League of Women Voters. We have prepared a guide to the measures on the ballot. In case people don't know, that there are four measures that they are going to get to vote for on this ballot, and, um, they're statewide, so they're going to be everywhere on there. And we have a little explanation of what a yes means and what a no means in our little flyer. We have them here for distribution. So before we close this candidate forum, I also wanna remind everybody that voting in North Dakota is really very simple. We can find a voting information at the county auditor's office here in Morton County, and we thank you all for coming tonight, and we appreciate your being here. Thank you very much. Thank you to the audience. Thank you to our viewing audience.